Jim? Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. Joyce, you guys, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Jim? Jim? It looks like his lips are moving.
No, he's eating french fries.
Oh, that's true. He was with me. All right. All right, we're all good? Everybody good? All right, I'm going to call a special meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, got a few things I want to comment on before we get started. First of all, I'm going to leave this up to the council, but we've only got an hour. We have other city business that needs to be worked on tonight. The Utilities Commission is meeting, as well as the Plan Commission at 6 o'clock. And so we have one hour to get this done. Because of that, and because of all the emails that we've gotten, and all the commentary that we had last night at our regular meeting through citizen comments, I am not going to be allowing public comment tonight. I don't know that there's anything that can be added to the discussion that we haven't already heard live or through emails, voicemails, phone conversations. If the council disagrees with that, you can make a motion to allow public comment. But please be advised that if you do, if we take any comment, we're going to take all comment. And that could push us beyond or up to the 6 o'clock hour, which would mean that we would probably have to adjourn, postpone the meeting until further notice in order to take the vote. So, like I said, if we're going to take any comment, we're taking it all. Is there anybody in the council that disagrees with that?
No.
I'm good with it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, everybody good? All right. So, we know what's on the agenda tonight. I want to keep this focused. I want to keep it narrow. What we're doing here tonight is dealing with the situation. I think we've heard a lot about it, but I want to make this clear. What's happening in Hudson right now, we heard a lot of comment last night, and part of the emails that we're seeing are coming through saying the same thing. The situation that we're currently experiencing in our city has nothing to do with whether we allow face masks or not. The people that are coming in from Minnesota are not coming here because we don't require or enforce the use of face masks. They're coming here because we're open, and Minnesota is not. They're coming here because they do like our restaurants, they do like our amenities, they love our downtown, but they're coming here in droves, in inordinate numbers, because we are open and Minnesota is not. Period. So I want to try to keep the discussion focused on that, and focused on the draft ordinance that our city attorney Kathy McKittrick has provided us. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Kathy.
Okay, I've, you all have a copy of the draft ordinance, I'm assuming. And this is an ordinance that's, if it's adopted, it's pursuant to the emergency powers of the city and municipalities under 323.11 and then 323.14. 323.11 allows a municipality to declare a state of emergency whenever conditions arise by reason of riot, civil commotion, disaster, imminent threat that impairs transportation, medical care, police protection. I'm not reading it all, but I'm reading the ones that specifically apply to the situation in Hudson. We're talking about transportation difficulties due to just the crowded streets and sidewalks, police protection being overwhelmed due to the numbers of people, and I understand the EMS as well, overwhelmed and mutual aid calls needed to be made and so forth. And as it's been publicized, there was violent crime that is not something that's typical to Hudson, so this is really a different situation than the city normally deals with. And our police resources, my understanding from the chief, were just taxed to the limit as well as the EMS, not the city's, but the contracted EMS, such that mutual aid needed to be called. So that's the situation the council is faced with, and the council is addressing through this ordinance. The ordinance first declares a state of emergency based on the circumstances that I just described, some in more detail regarding the stabbings and so forth. And then, as a way to address that situation, under 323.14, which gives the council authority to do whatever is necessary and expedient for the health, safety, protection, and welfare of persons and properties within the local unit of government. So that is the intent behind the ordinance that orders that anyone with a liquor license, on-sale liquor license, as listed in the ordinance, must close at 10 p.m., rather than their normal closing time set by state law. And you need to understand that those closing times are set by state law, and it has been pointed out by the Tavern League to the city that municipalities are not typically allowed to restrict or otherwise change closing laws. However, the city is operating under this emergency powers, and it's for a short time and focused on addressing this emergency. I have discussed this with the league, I've done some research. It's essentially uncharted territory. We don't have any reported case law in this 323. However, the statute is there, and it does give the city authority to address emergencies, and that's the statute that this ordinance is based on. And it's purposely focused, you know, on addressing the times that are most difficult and when most people, when most people are coming from Minnesota, which are the weekend, Friday, Saturday nights, and then also the 23rd, 24th, 25th, and December 31st. It's really narrowly focused to address this emergency, and that's what's required under the emergency statutes. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. Like I said, there's little to no case law on this statute, however, the facts are the facts in terms of what the situation is that the city is dealing with.
Comments or questions?
I'm going to eventually have some questions. I guess some of the questions is, you know, if we do this, and the governor of Minnesota extends any further out, do we extend this further out?
Well, that'll need to be a situation that the council addresses at that time. I don't know if an emergency will be extensive, you know, I don't, you'll have to just look at the circumstances at that time.
And if the Tavern League gets involved, what could we expect as far as litigation? I mean...
Yeah, you, I mean, it's, any ordinance is subject to challenge. This one, as I said, typically the city cannot be any more restrictive on hours, closing hours. And the question really is, and this is, does the emergency powers override the typical, the state law that says the city can't be more restrictive? We are not adopting, or the city would not be adopting, long-term restrictions. We're not adopting long-term, different closing hours. The purpose of this ordinance is designed to be narrow, focused on the emergency situation that the city has right now, and that's it. So that's how it's different from the statutes under 125. We're not adopting a long-term, hey, you have to close, closing hours are changing in Hudson. This is a temporary, narrowly-focused ordinance designed to address the current circumstances.
Are we overstepping our bounds by forcing an ordinance on a select few businesses?
Part of the statute that allows the declaration of emergency and to do what's necessary says that the, well, the period of the emergency shall be limited to the ordinance and address the emergency conditions that exist. So we're required to try to narrowly focus it to address the emergency conditions that exist. It appears that it's the alcohol-related businesses that are, that's drawing the people into the city. So you could go both ways on that. If the city were to say, all businesses have to close, well, then that's broader than the emergency the city is dealing with at this time. So, I can't, I can't tell you how a court would come out, but I think we have certainly grounds for doing, you know, the legal statutory authority. And then I do think it's up to the court to defer to the, to the city council's determination in this situation of, does an emergency exist? I mean, these are no small crimes that are occurring in the city. They're very different. And so I think there should be a certain amount of deference to the council and its law enforcement agency to determine what needs to be done and whether an emergency exists.
I've got a question for the rest of the council to answer whenever, but are we overreacting too quickly without bringing people to the table to find a solution to the problem that presented itself?
Anybody?
Well, and this, I know I'm not calling, so I'm sorry, Randy, but I guess just to comment from the staff side on it is that, and Jeff can obviously speak to this better than I can, but this past weekend was the unfortunate culmination of issues that have been building. And like I said, I think Jeff and our police officers can speak to that better than I can, but just, I think from the staff side, this finally brought it to a head. I think it's been a growing problem. It's been manageable, but only in the sense that we didn't have something like this occur that, you know, we just, we weren't able to address. It just happened. And so I think that, while yes, a situation has brought this forward quickly, it has been building for a while, as far as issues and concerns downtown and our ability to respond. And not just downtown. I mean, I think we're also getting just as many calls up to the Hilltop to deal with issues in hotels and things like that of problems.
What'd you bring that up for?
Because you're asking the question, that's why.
Randy, what have you seen in your hotel?
Nothing besides the outside wasted, people that come up and they obviously throw up and things like that. We haven't had any calls of service over this last weekend. I know there has been issues after talking with Chief Willam.
Is Chief Willam's available?
Yes, he's here. Chief?
I've got some questions. Are there incidents throughout the week with things worse on Friday and Saturday? I guess my question relates to, is Friday and Saturday, or are Friday and Saturday enough to help with this problem, or should we be closing the bars at 10 every night?
The types of issues that we're seeing are exacerbated by the weekends. Weekends are always busier, obviously, for us, but the last three weeks have been increasingly busier and busier as every week goes on from the, since the Minnesota lockdown. So initially, I would think the weekends, the weekend limit would be reasonable.
One of the things that is mentioned in this ordinance is the crimes, the crime has occurred in the later evening, early morning hours around the time of bar closing, and appears to be directly related to over-service of alcohol beverages. Have you cited any places for over-serving, or what are your thoughts on concerns about over-service?
Oh, well, I think anytime someone's intoxicated, right, they're being over-served. So I, you know, I think it always happens. I don't know that it's, I think it's because of the increased number of people, the increased number of calls, but most importantly, it's the increased type of calls that we're getting, the seriousness of the nature of the calls that we're getting, that's requiring mutual aid assistance by our department and most of our working shift to respond to some of these situations. That's leaving, leaving the rest of the city to fend for themselves while we deal with these situations. That's, that's where the burden comes. It's the increased robbery calls, it's the increased assault calls, it's the increased EMS calls for unconscious people laying in the street. It's, it's that sort of thing that, that is taxing our resources, and we're having to call for help from the Sheriff's Department and from North Hudson, and, you know, it's taxing all of us.
Yeah. And I agree, this can't go on. Would decreasing the capacity of the bars and restaurants be one solution?
I don't know that I can answer that. If that was a question to me or the regular council, I don't know if I can answer that.
No, it was to you, whether you had any thoughts on that. Would better, all right, it's illegal for the bars to over-serve the customers. Would better enforcement of that be helpful?
Enforcement of over-service?
Yes.
I don't even know that we would be able to do that at this point.
Well, and also, just, just in from a practical sense, I mean, yes, obviously it's illegal to over-serve, but it's almost impossible to enforce. Generally, that issue comes up, unfortunately, after the fact. When that was over-served, gets into an accident, does something like that, then it comes back to usually suits against the places that probably over-served. But the actual enforcement of over-service, it's really difficult. I mean, you can't, if you have, even if you have an officer sitting there watching, does that person look drunk, does that person not look drunk? Sometimes it's obvious, sometimes it's not. It is a difficult, that is a difficult, very difficult thing to put our officers in a position to have to do.
Okay. Yeah, because I did get a call from a person who drives for Uber and said that picking up passengers at the bars in Hudson, that there have been a number of people who have thrown up in his vehicle, and that's a concern. So, an evidence of too much alcohol. I guess I'd like to ask the rest of the council, do you think that reducing capacity in the bars and restaurants would be appropriate at this time? I, you know, I think that most of you got the email from Celeste suggesting some capacity limits, and I'm just wondering what your reaction to that is.
You know, Chief, before anybody else gets in on this, I'd like to ask a couple questions myself. First of all, pertaining to Joyce's question right now. What has been the experience with the number of people that are trying to get into the, into the facilities that we have downtown, numbers of people waiting in line, that type of thing?
Yeah, what we have seen is significant lines of people waiting to get into the establishments, and those lines, from what we've seen the last couple of weekends, are extending into the 1 o'clock hour, still waiting to get into bars.
So if we were to reduce capacity, what do you think that would do to the lines?
I think it would make the lines increase.
So people are still going to be in town, we're still going to have an influx, they're just going to be waiting longer?
I don't know, that's, that's a hypothesis, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I would think that if our capacity limits did decrease, that word would get out that the wait would be so long that a lot of people would probably decide that they would get takeout from a local restaurant near them rather than driving all the way to Hudson.
Joyce, what would, when and wouldn't would you reduce the capacity? You're already closing them at 10, now you want to take away the capacity to make even more money? I don't understand that train of thought. Can you explain that?
Well, we've got, these places are really crowded, and they're, we still have a pandemic going on. So, I'm concerned about passing on COVID and...
My only thing to say, Joyce, I'm sorry, I don't mean, but what we're focused on is not the COVID side with this. I mean, I think we have to recognize the separation right now, is that, trust me, I'm not downplaying COVID, I'm not downplaying that risk whatsoever, but the emergency order and declaration that we're talking about is related to public safety. And again, I'm not here to say that reducing capacity would or would not help improve public safety. That's, that's possible, I don't know that. But how reducing capacity relates to COVID is a discussion for another meeting, really.
Yeah, this emergency declaration is based on overloading police resources, medical resources, streets, et cetera.
Well, yeah, increased COVID numbers does stress medical resources.
Well, we're talking emergency medical resources.
Well, I think if we're trying to limit the masses in the streets and that decreasing capacity is something that can be on the table in this discussion.
Yeah, sure, I'm not saying it can't be for that reason, I'm just saying not for a public health, not for COVID-related reasons, because that's not what our focus is with this. But if you want to, yep, if you want to tie it to public safety by fewer people in the bar, that's an open discussion.
Correct.
You know, and Randy, I do have respect for the owners and concerns about their being able to stay open and being able to run a profitable business, but, you know, what are, what are our options, and keeping in mind that our responsibilities are to protect public safety?
I agree with you, Joyce. I just don't know if capacity, a double wham on our businesses down there would help them at all at this point. You know, we're running into the holiday season, and a lot of these businesses have employees that, you know, if you want to get emotional about Christmas time and holiday time and say they can't pay for their bills because of what's going on, I mean, that's a serious concern for a lot of these employers and employees who won't have money for Christmas.
And I get that, and I understand. The problem is that, you know, the federal government and the state governments have, haven't done what they should be doing, which is providing a safety net for people so that when they, their hours are reduced because of a pandemic, that they can get some help to, to make sure that they got enough. And...
Well, I realize that.
But that's not our, you know, that's not what the city is, is here to do. The city is here to protect the public safety. So how do we do that?
I think, I'm as concerned about COVID as, as anybody is in the masks and downsizing and limiting capacity, but I don't think that can, that's a longer-term problem that we've failed to address, and I think we need to address the, we have a short-term, very quick action that we can take here, and I'd like to see us move ahead with that, and, but agree that we have to come back and address this properly, as we have, we have failed to do that yet. So, I'm, and I spoke last night, I really questioned the framework for this meeting, but now I understand we're, or emergency action for public safety, we framed it in a certain way, and I, I'm concerned if we start adding other things to it, that we increase our liability of, or our, you know, liability, the fact we'll have more reasons for lawsuits and more chaff that's going to be tossed up and obscuring the issues. So I regretfully would suggest that we move ahead on the motions there. The other piece of this that I think is, applies directly, and I don't see how we, I don't know if we can address it, but is our, is our police resource, on a short-term basis, we need additional resource. That's the other part of the addressing on a short-term basis. And I don't know, I don't see, I'm not certain the way this is written, whether we can talk about that tonight or do anything about that. But that's, that's the next piece that actually would help.
Yeah, Jim, I agree with that. I think maybe Jeff can talk, talk about that, but I know that he is working with all of our law enforcement partners to bring in additional staffing to help. And I think we have been getting additional staffing, but we're looking at even doing more as far as with the county and possibly even with some neighboring cities, providing us with officers to help really greatly increase our presence in the city, on the weekends especially.
Good, good. That's, that's what we need to, we need to, we need to know that, and we need to reassure the citizens of Hudson that we're taking that action as well. So, great.
I think, I'd like to, oh, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
And then my, I guess my final concern was, is I'm, I'm seeing that this, we should do this seven days a week, seven nights a week, as opposed to Friday and Saturday, just to, it'll help even it out, it'll keep it from pushing other things to Sunday night, to Thursday night. Thursday night's a big night, you know, that's, that's almost as big as Friday, and has been for years. So I don't, I don't see why we should limit to Friday and Saturday. If we just made it seven nights a week, everybody can, can adjust to that. We can adjust our schedules to that. That's, I think I'm, I think I've said what I need to say. Sorry, I dropped out for a while, so technology's great if you know how to operate it.
I think if we're talking about our, you know, well, the police is a big component, you know, public safety, we need enough police to be on the street to manage the mayhem, if you will. If we talk about earlier closing, that's one thing. I, I still think decreasing capacity, and yes, I agree, maybe that's for another meeting, but that will also help, there's, it's a math problem, you know? How many people are going to come if they know that the lines are going to be longer because we've decreased the capacity? So it's something that I'd really like to talk about either tonight or in the future. You know, I'm with you, Jim, on the seven days a week. You know, I'm with you, Jim, on the seven days a week. You know, there's Thursday, Thursday, there was Tuesdays, there's, you know, the pictures I saw of people shoulder to shoulder, these, many of these people don't have days of the week that are, you know, they're not nine to fives, Monday to Wednesday. Any day of the week is an option for them to stay out late. So I'm very much in support of seven days a week. And, you know, we're really not asking these businesses to, we're not asking them to shut down, you know, I mean, other states have it way worse. So we're not saying close, we're just saying shift your schedules, get this, you know, get the end to happen earlier, change your specials, maybe have two-for-one appetizers at lunch instead. We gotta, we gotta get this late-night violence out of our streets. The rest of the city deserves to have good police coverage and all hours of the night as well. And, you know, if we're talking about taxpayer dollars, you know, we're the ones paying for the police, you know? We residents are paying for the police of this situation, and it's mostly policing people that are not our residents. So we have to be mindful of the money that we're spending on taxpayer dollars as well. So I'm all for the seven days a week. I do have one, one question for Kathy. Is it possible, I realize that we need an end date on this, and it needs to be, you know, not a forever-long ordinance that we just say, you know, put it out into the future at some date when we decide to rescind it. So we need an end date. Can that end date be tied at all to what happens in Minnesota? I would like to, you know, know if, you know, I know that when Minnesota reopens, it's going to do so in stages. I think that slated to start out at 25% and then move to 50. I think at 25%, people are not going to feel like that's a bar atmosphere. Could we possibly consider tying our end date to when Minnesota goes to 50%, whenever that might happen?
I think the more, the longer the term is and the more indefinite the term is, the more likely it will be subject to challenge. I do really think you need to address the circumstances at the time so that if they were to extend the restrictions or something like that, or if these circumstances were to take care of themselves by getting additional police officers, I don't, I think it's, it's more likely to be challenged if it's an indefinite end date. This, the purpose of this is to address the emergency the city is dealing with now. And that's...
In my opinion, will continue until Minnesota's at at least a 50% capacity.
Yes, but you will have an opportunity, if you think, if that is in fact the case, then there's nothing to keep the council from meeting, setting a meeting and extending this. But then you're looking at it...
Well, I should say too, when we, when we did, oh, sorry Kathy, I was going to say when we did set this, we looked at get through the holidays, but then also we have a council meeting on January 4th. So at the meeting on the 4th, we can get a review from, from the, you know, from Jeff and from the Police Department about how things have been going, how's it worked, what is happening in Minnesota. And at that meeting on the 4th, if the council would decide they would like to reinstate and extend, you know, we could do that at that point before that coming weekend.
What is the latest date that we would be able to put on this without triggering something?
I can't tell you that. It, I mean, what we're, you're trying to do is address circumstances you're dealing with. And how long are they likely to exist? We don't know. That's why it's more defensible if you keep it relatively short, recognize, you know, based on, there's probably more people going out and about during the holidays, based on, you can bring it back if it's still a problem and an emergency in January, then you look at it at that time. But the more indefinite it is, I think the more challengeable it is.
So if we put in a date like January 10th, do you think that would be a problem? That would give us a little extra time to look at this and make sure that we have enough time to make that change?
I can't tell you that some date is going to be better than another. You have a meeting on the 4th, why not put it on the agenda for the 4th and you can assess the situation?
You know, I, I think that relative to an end date, we, as Aaron pointed out, we definitely have the opportunity to meet again to discuss this a couple of different ways. We can do another special meeting, we can always have it on the agenda for our regular meetings. And I would also like to add that even if we do this right now, and I hope that we do something tonight, we've got a couple of weekends of experience or full weeks of experience with this, and we may want to come back and maybe modify it again before the end of the year. We certainly have enough time to do that. And I don't know that, Sarah, I'm not exactly sure that this only ends when Minnesota goes to 50%. Personally, I think a lot of this ends when winter actually happens. I don't see people waiting in lines when it's 0 or 10 below. I don't see them out there with snow on the ground, and I certainly don't see them driving the two to three hours that they are right now to come into our city to be able to drink when it's cold outside and the roads are slippery. So I, I'm hoping that a lot of this is mitigated by the weather that is due to come here, it's bound to come, it's winter. And frankly, I think that part of the problem that we've had in the last couple of weekends is that the weather has been very nice and has allowed people to be able to come here and wait outside for as long as they have and move around downtown outside. So, but back to the point being that we do have an opportunity to revisit this, we have several opportunities, we can call another special session or we can deal with this in a regular meeting.
Catherine, how does this affect a dinner theater like the Hudson House? Or how does it affect the bowling alley, which both have the alcohol ability, the food?
It applies to them.
And the movie theater?
What if they already have events booked?
Then they don't serve alcohol.
Well, I'm just saying, if they have a wedding, for example, booked, then you're going to shut this wedding down? We are going to shut this wedding down, or, you know what I'm saying?
Do we have to deal with private events?
Pardon? I guess I'm not aware of the various, you know, venues and so forth that are in the city and how that might apply, but that...
Well, you've got an ordinance in front of you, Randy, we could always modify it, we could always amend it. A private event is different, that's locked down, that's closed down.
Not open to the public.
Exactly. So if you want to modify the ordinance, I would recommend that you do that before we vote on it.
Well, I would say exclude private events, for sure.
Okay.
I think that's a good question.
Where it's by invitation only.
I, I'm a little concerned about exclude private events because all of a sudden I can see saying, this is a private event, and it's just another way of getting around it. I would, I would think that we'd want to review them.
And we allow people to request an exclusion for something like that rather than us writing it into the ordinance? I ask that because, you know, we've literally gotten hundreds of emails and not one of them was from the Hudson House or the bowling alley or the movie theater. So if someone had something that they know that's on the calendar, you know, we've been asked to limit groups to under 10, and, you know, so, by the state, right? Or no more than 50. So if someone wants to ask for an exclusion, we could easily write away in this that they could do so pretty easily and we would not, you know, withhold approval.
Sorry, Sarah, but I did talk to the owners of those establishments, and they have people on the books. And I don't want to be the one to tell a bride that they're ruining, or the city's going to ruin their wedding reception or their special day or whatever event it may be. They have concerns.
Neither do I. I said we've put in, put something in this ordinance that easily allows them to request an exception, and we would not withhold approval.
Well, you could have something, private events may apply for an exception to this.
Just if we're going to do something like that with the exception, would it be, would it be allowable to do that as an administrative approval versus having to call the council together to approve it?
Well, that's up to the council, but yes, I would, it's, I think you could do that.
I'd be amenable to that.
I think I could trust you to make those decisions here.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we would take a look at it. I mean, if it's a private event, it's a private event. If it's a local bar that's going to throw a private party, well, we, if in doubt, we'll bring it to the full council, how's that?
So private events by invitation only may apply for an exception to this order.
And Kathy, do you think that's legal?
I think there are different, what we're trying to address is businesses that are open to the public and that are drawing these hordes of people. So it is a different, there's a distinction between private events by invitation only and businesses that are open to the public. That's what the city is trying to get under control.
So I'm aware we only have about 15 minutes to wrap it up, so my thoughts after just kind of listening to where people are at. First of all, I think we have to act tonight in public safety. I think that everyone has to make sacrifices for public safety, and I think this is going to be kind of one of those moments, unfortunately, for some of our downtown bars and restaurants. What I'm hearing tonight is concern about the date of it, January 3rd or going longer, and I'm hearing concern about should it be seven days a week or should it be, you know, a couple of days on the weekends? But I'm hearing a lot of consensus, if I'm right, that we do want to go forward with something. So the other thing I want to say is I think I've had nothing but public support from constituents for this ordinance, who basically said over and over in emails and at last night's meeting, we have to do something to protect our citizens in this town, we have to do something to make people feel safe. So with that said, I guess my thought would be to add the exemption that you guys were just talking about, and then I think to add Thursday nights to the list. And what I'm thinking is Thursday, Friday, Saturday might give us that coverage that we're really looking for in the busy nights. But I would also think the mayor's point is well-taken, let's try it out. And if there continues to be problems during the weekdays, we can always go back and adjust it. But I think I want a more balanced approach where we're, we're really hitting those busy nights, so to speak, and we're going to kind of wait and see a little bit the reaction. So I guess with that, I would, I would move to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Motion to second to suspend the rules, roll call.
I can do it. Moore said?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
We're going to be out of order here, sorry. Hall?
Yes.
Atkins, Hoggan?
Yes.
DeZeele?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
I was looking at my screen, that was the easiest way for me to do it.
Motion's approved.
It's okay, Becky. I knew you were there, but I'll keep it going.
Is she there? Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
I would like to propose we adopt the ordinance 1920 with the exceptions of, that we talked about with the exception where a private party could basically petition, right, what's the word, they petition the city staff?
Apply to the city, yeah, for an exception to this order.
Yep, and then I'm going to also amend the original 1920 to include Thursday nights.
I'll begrudgingly second that because I don't want to see a full week. I mean, we're doing enough as it is, it's damage to these businesses, and I don't want to see them suffer any, at least amount as possible. So I will second Paul's for Thursday.
All right, we have a motion to second to adopt the ordinance as amended. I just want to say this, this was originally my proposal, obviously based upon circumstances that have arisen over the last couple of weekends. I originally thought it prudent to extend this to every day of the week, make it seven days a week. You saw that the ordinance, the way it's drafted, was limited to Friday, Saturday, as well as the additional three dates, the 23rd, 24th, and 31st. And I had more or less changed my mind about the seven days a week based upon my conversations with the chief and with other people in the downtown area. So I support the motion that's brought forth by Paul. And to the business owners that are affected by this, I am sorry that we're in a situation where we have to even be discussing this. We are in extraordinary times right now, and they seem to be getting more and more extraordinary. And it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation. I want you to know that we do support you. It may seem like we're not, but we do. I don't want to be too punitive here. I do want to revisit this, if you guys have some ideas on changes that perhaps could allow you to be open longer, that would be great, I'm certainly all ears. But here's the bottom line, the people in this town own downtown. It's not the businesses, it's not the restaurants or the bars, it's the citizens of our community. And it's not just the streets of downtown, it's the park, it's the dyke. And this is a great community that people right now have expressed to us their fear of even venturing into the downtown area. The citizens of our city are afraid, they fear for their safety when they even contemplate going into our downtown area, just to even go to the parks, to go to the library, to go to the Phipps. And we need to address this situation. It's fluid, and I'm certainly more than willing to review this, but we do need to act, and I hope that we can pass this as amended.
I, thank you, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to see after this if we could come up with some type of meeting with the establishments downtown and invite them to sit down to the table where we can have a conversation with them and maybe get some ideas of what can be done, what they would agree with or not agree with.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess I want to say two things. I want to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you first for your leadership in getting us together tonight and for the quick response in getting the ordinance drafted. I think that's really, really helpful and really, really responsive local governments, I appreciate that. And then the second thing I want to stress is this is very, very temporary. So we're really trying to get through some difficult times with the inequity or the imbalance, I should say, with Minnesota. And I echo Randy's point, I think we want to support our downtown businesses, but we just have to get through this very difficult time and make sure people feel safe patronizing those businesses, so.
I, my, I guess my point should, I am concerned about not extending it to seven days. So it'd be very begrudging to even support that. The other, so I would also, I would like to hear from Chief about the, his insights that he has on that as to why that would, is workable and why that, that does, that helps his staff, helps him manage it. And the other part of that is that we need to be, have very clear, very detailed, perhaps is the wrong word, we need to hear what's going on. And I want a, I want a presentation at every council meeting about what's happening, what's happening on the crime statistics, you know, what are we seeing, what kinds of issues are we having, what are we, what's, just, has this addressed it? If it hasn't, are we, we'll have to do something, if it hasn't, we'll have to do something stronger? And if it has, then we can say we did the right thing. But we need to know.
Chief?
Yep. So it's just, it's just numbers-based, where I think the weekend crowd and activity levels are just so much higher than during the week that, that's where I felt as it was more reasonable on weekends if you're going to do something like this than to do the whole week. It's just on sheer, just on sheer numbers. Complaint numbers, type of complaint numbers, population, density numbers, I mean, it's just based on the numbers.
Chief, I have a quick question. The 10:00 PM time, is that sort of an arbitrary time or is that kind of rooted in some of the data that you're seeing, that definitively 10:00 PM is going to help solve this?
Most of the violent type altercation calls we get are after 10:00 PM. Most of the violent type altercation calls we get are after 10:00 PM. If not, I would say 85 to 90% are after that 10 o'clock hour.
Do you have any statistics as to, like if it were to be 11, 11:00 PM versus 10:00 PM?
I don't have, I don't have those. I don't have those broken down by hour at this moment.
Build up, I could speak to that from my conversations with restaurant owners, with people who work in restaurants, with people who go downtown. Independently, I've had three different confirmations of, of that number. At 10 o'clock, the crowd rolls over. You get, you get a different crowd after 10 o'clock. The people who've been there to eat and dine and have, and have a couple of drinks are gone. And people who were there to drink are coming in. And it, and it's a total shift in, in behavior. So that's, that's a perception from people who are physically there. Hostess, manager, owner, people who go, who go there. They've, they've, when I ask them, this is the information, feedback I get, that 10 o'clock is really a good time.
I talked to one of the owners and what he said was that they still have substantial sales between 10 and 11. And so he wanted to keep things open until 11 in order to take advantage of those sales. But it sounds like because of those sales that we probably do need to cut things off at 10.
All right, we're approaching 6 o'clock. We've got members of the plan commission waiting outside for this room. Is there anybody that feels compelled to add anything to this before we vote?
I would like to just add one thing that, that's been acknowledged on several conversations that, you know, we really have to think about our neighbors and impact, you know? At closing here at 10 means, you know, some other communities might have to brace for impact. So I acknowledge that and know that, I want them to know right now that that was not overseen by any of us. Well, I know I gave a good consideration on New Richmond, Baldwin, North Hudson. Our surrounding communities are going to be impacted by whatever we do. And I just want them to know that, that fact did not go unnoticed.
Thank you for that, Sarah. And I just want you and the council to know that last weekend, last Sunday, in anticipation of this meeting, I contacted, I reached out to the surrounding municipalities and let them know that we would be having a hearing on this and what the likely outcome would be. What I was anticipating the likely outcome would be. They're aware of it. They know what's going on. They're watching, I'm sure. And, and hopefully they'll be making, you know, having, having similar discussions about what they're going to do and, again, anticipating any type of overflow that they might have. All right, anybody else?
Yes, there's one, one observation that was brought up by at least two or three different times in the various emails and things that I've seen. And that's particularly on Saturday, that the drunkenness, intoxication that's out in public was abnormal, was there, it shouldn't have been. So why, is this going to reduce that? We need, that's something I'd like us to, to be looking at. Might take a different action.
Probably a different conversation. All right.
I think we need
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved.
Move to adjourn?
Do I need a motion to have a roundtable discussion?
No, we'll do that. All right.
I will do it anyways, Randy, you don't worry.
Thank you.
I'll get it set up.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here at our special meeting. I think, I appreciate you all pitching in on this. Thanks.